I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission's regular meeting of September 4th to order at 7:29 PM. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our official roll call. I am here, Ms. Kalal.
Here.
Mr. Pack.
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Jette Harris is not here tonight. Would Ms. Sisko sit for her?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wiska, I don't see him tonight. Ms. Yuhas is here, thank you. Mr. Mahalins, Ms. LaRocco.
Yeah.
And Ms. Hardy. Ah, we have most everyone. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll open with the regular meeting. We have an application of Ocean County Construction for Coastal Area Management, or otherwise called a CAM review, for repair to existing seawall at property located at One Blue Herring Court, Niantic, Assessor MAP 05.19, Lot 95. Ms. Kalal, could you read Mr. Mahalins' memo?
Now welcome to Eastline Zoning Commission for William Mahalins, zoning official. Read the CAM review of One Blue Herring Court, Niantic, date September 3rd. As the commission is aware, the coastal site plan reviews are a state mandated program authorized in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This statute delegates legal authority to the zoning commissions to adopt regulations and regulate activities not otherwise exempted occurring above the CJL or coastal jurisdiction line as identified by the Connecticut DEEP and within the defined coastal boundary of their respective communities to take coastal resources and ensure compliance with the CAM Act's coastal goals and policies. The board is charged with the review of coastal statements and may approve, modify, or deny activities prepared after evaluating the specific site and considering potential effects both beneficial and adverse of activities on coastal resources in their consistency with applicable state coastal goals and policies. In acting on a coastal site plan, the commission must state its findings and reasons for the decision. To approve, the board must find that the proposed activity is consistent with the board's policy statutes, whether or not any potential adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources and coastal development are acceptable. The board should consider the characteristics of the site, including the location and condition of onsite coastal resources, if any. The commission must find in an approval that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the Act, and that all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of a proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent activities. The applicant, Coastal County Construction, has applied for a CAM site plan review. The purpose of this application is to repair an existing seawall. The subject wall is approximately 104 feet in length with a set of concrete stairs at the northerly end. The stairs access the shoreline. The wall protects an existing dwelling on the upland area of the property. The applicant will excavate the water side of the wall, repair it as necessary, and be replaced the wall with a 10-inch-thick reinforced concrete face up to the existing top elevation of 8.2 feet. The excavation will then be backfilled with stone and regraded. The concrete stairs will also be replaced. I note here that the DE, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, or DEEP, has already issued a certificate of permission to perform the work. Because the project is a solid erosion control structure, the CAM Act requires both the town and Connecticut DEEP to review and approve. The state has jurisdiction below the coastal jurisdiction line and the town above. In this application, the CJL or coastal jurisdiction line is halfway up the face of the seawall. Because the town has limited authority and the C, Connecticut DEEP, has already approved, our review is essentially a housekeeping process.
Could you like to present now?
Sure.
If you could state your name and address.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
The microphones on this end of the table, I should have told you at the beginning of the meeting, have not been working. We had problems with them last night. It's time to get the microphone right up close to you. We can barely hear what she was saying.
Oh, okay, thank you.
He's got to be very close to you, so doing you on the end, definitely your mic's down and you're...
Listen, speak loudly.
I can do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Adam Bernat, owner of Ocean County Construction. We are a marine construction company based out of North Stonington, Connecticut. We specialize in seawalls, jetties, piers, revetments, and anything that has to do with the waterfront. Tonight, I'm representing Mr. David Weiss, customer of ours. He's located at One Blue Herring Court here in Niantic, Connecticut. And on the front page, you will see in the upper corner, the project site location. The property is located in the Black Point area of Niantic, which butts the Niantic Bay. Second page. As you can see, this is the survey of the property. At the end of Blue Herring Court is the Weiss property, and at the very end as well is a right-of-way, which is owned by the Black Point Beach Association. We currently have permission to use this area for access and/or lay down for tools and materials. The scope of the work will be taking place on the concrete splash pad area, which is located right on the waterfront. The existing seawall face, excuse me, is deteriorated severely. The concrete stairs are no longer safe to be used, so the work will be taking place mostly on the water side of the property. On the third page here, you will see that the pictures indicate the deterioration and erosion of the seawall face. In front of the seawall itself, it's just basically all large stone and cobble. There's no aquatic plants or shellfish life. It is mainly sand, cobble, and large stone. That is where the excavation will be taking place. Then we'll be constructing a rebar cage, placing forms, and pouring a new slab face of the actual seawall itself. In the far corner, where the stairs are located, we're going to be saw cutting and removing, and then we'll be pouring new stairs and set the actual concrete slab area, so they're not able to project out into the bay itself. Other than that, we are doing some drainage work, the backside of the pad, and also return walls on either end to help anchor the seawall itself. And that's basically the gist and the idea of what we're trying to accomplish, very basic in our line of work. And if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
You received your DEEP approval, I think it was a month ago, approximately?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Do any of the commission members have questions?
It all looks pretty straightforward to me. It's obviously in need of repair.
Correct.
I mean, I think it's important to help it not erode any further, so I'm all for it.
Any boulders going to be in front of the concrete wall?
Yes, the boulders that are existing there now will be set aside on the shore itself to help protect.
No building built up against the...
Well, the boulders will actually be put back in place in front of the wall. It'll help act as a barrier to protect from the waves and undermining of the newer wall.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the application of Ocean County Construction for the Coastal Area Management CAM review for repair to existing seawall at property located at One Blue Herring Court, Niantic, Assessor's MAP 05.19, Lot 95. The application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act. The applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both the coastal resources and future water-dependent uses.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Have fun building your seawall.
Who's going to pick?
Hopefully, everyone has read the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We do not have any old business or subcommittee reports, but it looks like we're going to have a lot of new business coming up. We'll be having the application of Jerry Locken for Eastline Parks and Recreation for special permit under Section 20.1-F of the Eastline Zoning Regulations for property located at 16 Mostoway Road, Eastline, Assessor MAP 40.0, Lot 5. Mr. Mahalins, could you schedule that for a hearing?
I will, thank you.
We will have an application of Alex Close, or Kloss, for Eastline Public Works for special permit under Section 20.1-F of the Eastline Zoning Regulations for property located at 475 Boston Post Road, Eastline, Assessor MAP 18.0, Lot 21. Mr. Mahalins, could you also schedule that one?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next, we will have an application of Robert Ferrier, agent for Cary Hill Post Number 5849 and veteran of foreign wars, for special permit for a private club for Section 9.2.1 of the Eastline Zoning Regulations for property located at 39 Columbus Avenue, Niantic, Assessor MAP 11.4, Lot 78. We'll also need that scheduled for public hearing. Thank you. Also, we have coming up the application of Thomas Gueno for waiver of ownership for backlot per Section 20.8 in favor of property located at 29 Upper Walnut Hill Road, Eastline, Assessor MAP 54.0, Lot 9. Yet another one to schedule.
I'll do.
Thank you. Next, do we have any business on the floor, if any? Ms. Kalal has liked to speak about chicken regulations. Do we have at least four people to vote in favor of listening to Ms. Kalal and the chickens? I'm fine with it.
No?
Norm, are you fine with it?
Yep.
How about the, yeah, we have four, so take it away.
Okay. So, I've been through the regulations ad nauseam, and it appears...
Do you want me to hear what we pass these?
Oh, this is the current regulations.
With modifications.
Oh, this is the new, okay.
That, oh, that's the new proposed, as we discussed, if it moves.
Can we all have copies?
She has copies for everybody. Does that contain the old one too? Okay.
So, the old regulations basically were limited to anyone with an acre or more of land in town, and it seems to me that in this climate of economic hardship, that people should be able to raise their own food, and that includes having chickens. So, after much ado, we have compromised on everyone having the ability to have chickens, that the use shall be on a lot not less than 10,000 square feet, with a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot required. Now, ChatGPT says we only have one lot in town that's legal that is less than 10,000 square feet. Is that true?
Don't know. The old regs allow it in the RU200, RU120, RU80, and RU40, and of course, the 200's been changed in up zones, so that would change. The only thing different in this discussion that's in front of you or in print is the old reg calls for minimum one acre in those zones and requiring essentially one acre. All the rest of the rules are in your Section 25.5 now for the RU200, 120, 80, and 40. So, the change would essentially be adding it to 10 and 12 and dropping the size required.
So, the question that I have is, what is the smallest-sized lot? Because people...
Well, right now, it's, right now, it's one acre, so you have an R12 and an R10 zoning, residential zoning district.
Of all the lots in town...
R10 would be the smallest.
And how small is that?
10,000 square feet, quarter acre.
Now, we have Mrs. Dagostino with us. How big is your lot?
It's exactly 10,000 square feet. Bingo.
We have a winner.
But there are people in my neighborhood who have 50 by 50 lots, the same lot. That might be interesting as well.
I don't, right now, it's a discussion among us, but...
I'm so sorry.
I have a question. I didn't see on here that it has to follow the setbacks for that. So, like, like in the R10, isn't it 12-foot on the side and 12-foot in the back?
Uh, yes, it is.
Wouldn't we want a chicken coop to follow the same setbacks as I have?
Let me run through it very quickly, if you, if you concur.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm going to read it, if that's okay with you, Mrs. Kalal.
Sure.
This is what's existing. RU200, 120, 80, and 40. Use will be on not less than one acre, minimum one acre required, no roosters permitted, no more than six hens may be kept. A chicken coop and enclosed pen shall be required on all properties where chickens are kept. Chickens are allowed only in the chicken coop and outdoor enclosure. Free-range activity is not permitted. The coop shall accommodate not more than six chickens. The coop and coop yard may not be located in a front yard and shall not be visible from a street or neighboring property. The coop shall be a maximum size of six feet by eight feet by six feet in height. The coop enclosure shall be fenced. The coop and enclosure may not be located within the required setback in the underlying zone. So, that answers your question, and... Any composting waste shall comply with Connecticut's best management practice for agriculture. Waste materials must be disposed of in a manner that will not cause odors, flies, or attract vermin. The coop and enclosure must be clean and odor-free, kept in a neat and sanitary condition at all times in a manner which will not disturb the use or enjoyment of neighboring properties. Note, a special permit is not required for uses under this section. And of course, obviously, you can't have a rooster, and it does say that to reiterate. So, that's what's existing, so the only change is talking about essentially the density of the neighborhood where it's allowed. And right now, as written, it's, it would include R12 and R10, so the thought is to lower the minimum to 10,000 square feet in that zoning district.
So, your, your goal is to take this to public hearing, right? Is that right?
Unless we can do it through a text amendment change?
Well, you have to take it...
Well, a text amendment does require a public hearing and referrals. As, as you recall, it requires referrals to the Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Agency, and the Connecticut DEEP by statute. We need to do that, give them 35 days, so it takes about 40 days for a turnaround, and then we need to find a slot in your busy fall schedule to put this in, if that's what the commission chooses to do.
Can we just have everyone give their opinion on this?
Are we define, do we have a definition of what a chicken is?
We have a definition.
Does that include the Andean giant chicken?
Well, since you asked. I think it's a foul question myself, but...
There's only one giant chicken either in Connecticut, New York, or Cleveland.
He's not that good, actually.
Well, bird is.
Oh, the bird, sure.
Well, I think it also about... Just from out of my head.
Definition, and I think I have another one, but give me a chance to look. Livestock animals, including but not limited to horses, cows, goats, and sheep. Somewhere else in here. Apologize for not knowing this one off the top of my head. I thought maybe we had taken, oh. A farm, attract a land use or necessary farm buildings in connection with the raising and/or caring for agricultural livestock, poultry, or dairy products, but excluding the raising of fur-bearing animals and the maintaining of dog kennels. So, that's really what we have for definitions. We don't technically define a chicken.
It seems a little shoddy.
Well, some things get overlooked in zoning from time to time.
So, are you saying we need to add a definition of chicken?
I, I, I mean, being silly, I do not care a single...
Mr. Pack, what's your opinion?
Why me?
Is there a reason why we can only have six chickens, six hens?
Very, very quickly background, we did, this commission put these regulations in place after much debate and public hearings several years ago, might even be 10. I think Salerno was on at that time.
Yes.
And there was great debate, and this is what the board came up with at that particular time. My question today is, the view changed? It seems that it may have, and do you want to go forward with this particular document and take some public input and maybe modify it, maybe keep it the way it is, however you choose to move forward?
I live in the R10 area, and actually, some of my neighbors did have chickens, and no one minded, and we got three eggs.
And that's the benefit. Your pressure works really great when you have three eggs.
I was just wondering who's going to go out there and count that there's only six chickens in there.
Janet.
There'd have to be a chicken reward.
And not, and not everybody has chickens for eggs. Some have meat chickens too, so that's why I'm thinking like, six may not be enough.
And I think the issue was, my recollection, having been at those hearings, is, and Norm was there as well, my recollection is, we, the board left out the more dense neighborhoods because they had concerns about not being well-kept and bringing in vermin, et cetera, et cetera, because we had had some complaints. That's sort of how it got kicked off in a more dense neighborhood. And I think the board felt at that time that it wasn't appropriate, that view may have changed.
Sarah, what are your thoughts?
I guess my thoughts are, in more dense neighborhoods where there is an HOA, can they have their own rules about the chickens?
Yes, they can, and HOAs and in private developments, they all have to, you know, if zoning allows it, then it's going to be up to the homeowners association, because all the units really own all the land in common, so it's a board decision essentially of the HOA.
I'm not going to see him at the orchard, I guarantee that.
No, come on.
Would this be, is the idea here to be, this would be self-governing, or do they have, actually have to come in and get a permit?
Self-governing.
Good.
We don't have the time to be in everybody's backyard, nor do we want to be. We have bigger fish to fry or chickens to pluck, or something like that.
So, would the commission like to think about this, or would you like to vote on whether to send it to a hearing or not?
Well, I guess I have another question.
Okay.
Has anybody else on the board been hearing comments about chickens around town and wanting chickens available or anything?
I just know people in the smaller zones, I know a couple that have them or have had them anyway, and they haven't seemed to have been a problem.
My kids have one, and I love the eggs. Well, I think part of the impetus for this is there's approximately between 100 and 175 illegal chicken coops in town.
Do you have addresses?
Honest to God, you, she counted those.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I want to know.
People, people call me all the time, and, and I get their leftover chickens and their leftover waters and all the leftover stuff, because they last a year, the kids lose interest, and then they're done.
Well, I just, I do think COVID, um...
Yes.
...brought that on, but, um...
Well, and now the price of eggs.
I have friends in this very room who have had chickens, Mr. Sanford, and we had fun with them, didn't we?
So, is there someone that wants to make a motion, or would you like to think about it until next meeting?
Um...
But I, I think, I think we, well, first of all, would we make a motion on not this one's ahead of us, in front of us?
Yes.
Yes, actually, yes.
To go to public hearing.
But I thought we were just, we were condensing this to just a single line of texts basically changing the size of the lot.
Well, this is already, these are already the rules, so he's really just changing that.
The lot size?
Yes, just changing the lot size to add R10 and R12.
I mean, I, I don't know if there's a great public clamoring for, for this, but it seems like we're going to be pretty busy the next couple of months. I mean, to add a chicken hearing might be gilding a lily, but this won't take very long. I'll move, you say that, but you've got every crackpot tunnel shot.
Go ahead, Norm.
I will move to bring this to public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I agree with hearing.
I don't mind.
Aye.
I mean, we could probably schedule that for spring anyway.
I'll, I'll find a spot.
Anybody against? Opposed? Any abstention? It passed 6-0.
I will schedule it and find a spot for it somewhere.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I did not receive any correspondence. Public delegations, public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission regarding zoning land use items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak? No one? Mr. Mahalins?
Briefly, you, as you see, you're going to be a little busy, and we have some other things already on the schedule, so we'll keep you posted. Next meeting's in a couple of weeks, I think it's the 18th, if I'm not mistaken, Jess. So, we'll see you then. We're busy. And I will add one more thing, because no one's asking the question, but I will bring it up and inform you that I did meet with the first selectman, as I do from time to time, to talk about various things, and one of the things that we discussed was the Affordable Housing Moratorium. He has informed me that he has instructed Mr. Attorney Bledgedale to move forward. So, that's what I have to offer.
That happened two months ago.
Yes, and I met with him, I think it was yesterday. So, I'm sharing what I was told.
Yes.
I'll report on that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, come on up.
I never thought I'd live to see another discussion about chickens. Having endured the last, by my count, eight meetings, be prepared. Eight meetings on chickens that lasted for probably three months. So, let's see what happens. And I don't have chickens, so I don't have a peep in this.
It become mandatory.
So, the Board of Selectmen did meet last night. We heard extensive comments from the developer, including some very upsetting comments about our town employees who work very hard.
The subject was?
The subject was...
On the agenda, you're speaking about the moratorium?
The moratorium.
Or the water and sewer moratorium?
The, the water, the moratorium that was passed last night.
On sewer.
The water sewer moratorium.
Yes, thank you. So, we had quite a discussion on that, and I'm very pleased to say that this resulted in a, an unanimous vote to continue to enforce the regulations that we have, and that there will be a three-year moratorium on, while we are able to, with the assistance... while we are able to, with the assistance of the zoning commission, Planning and Water and Sewer Commission, have that three years to come up with a plan and decide what we, what we can do.
Why did they decide it would take three years to come up with a plan?
Because of the amount of research that's required to be done, updating of new projects that are on the table. And I think some of this will probably come before your board, before we come up with any final decisions. But we have three years to update our regulations to make sure that we're in compliance with current rules and to decide what we're going to do to solve this problem. Because it's becoming increasingly a problem, and we're at the point where connection of even smaller developments are going to have to be questioned. So the applicant feels.
This is about capacity?
Yes. And the applicant feels that affordable housing would allow for him to have exemptions to the rules that a regular applicant has to have. And so we really need to research more thoroughly just how many exceptions we have to make for affordable housing. So there'll be more to come. And again, I'm sure that we will want to include perhaps a representative from zoning to sit in with us to kind of give the perspection, perspective of zoning. So I was very pleased. There were some people, two meetings ago, that were not sure that they would vote for this, but we spent a tremendous amount of time, not as much time as we spent on the chickens, but we spent a tremendous amount of time going through this and making certain that we were doing the right thing. So we have some more research to do, particularly about the background, because at the time of the applicant buying the property, buying the property on Nosogaja Hills, we did not have the type of water and sewer activity that we have today. So I will keep you posted. And again, my recommendation will be that we ask for someone from zoning to sit in as a representative to gather input, all the input that we possibly can. Because this is, this is going to take some work. But I would, I would recommend that all of you watch the, watch the meeting of our last, watch the minutes of our last meeting, which was just last night. And that should be up and running on our cable network. And I think that you'll be very interested in the points that the applicant made. Thank you, and thank you for the short meeting.
As, as was mentioned before, in regards to the moratorium on affordable housing projects, it was a couple of months ago that I heard the same words. We have put the application in with the attorney. So any idea how long this is going to take? The actual status of it being two months?
It'll be, we have the three years.
No, this is for the 830G moratorium.
Oh, oh. That was not part of the discussion, but I will bring it up again.
I think, I think when Mr. Cunningham was here, we had the impression it was moving forward. But then a week or two later, I talked to the land use attorney, and he said nothing had been signed. So I guess we're just curious when it's actually going to be, you know, applied for.
Well, I think with the moratorium and it being approved by the Board of Selectmen, I think it'll be.
It's completely separate issue.
Not the water and sewer, the 830G.
Yes.
And that has to be the attorney to apply, but Mr. Cunningham has to sign it. And as, you know, I saw the attorney a couple of weeks after our meeting, and he said it had not been signed yet. So we just wondered when.
I don't, I, I can't answer for the first selectman. This did not come up at the discussion last night. I thought that they were all wrapped into the same with the moratorium. So I will get clarification of that.
If you could ask them, we'd appreciate it.
I will get clarification of that. And I will send a memo to our, to Mr. Mahal, and then he can relay to the board.
Thank you.
The sewer moratorium may effectively make the 830G application moot because you can't put up 100 units without being able to hook up to sewers.
And that was part of the discussion.
But it still has, it still has to be dealt with. I believe you guys a couple of months ago voted, the Board of Selectmen that has voted to approve the application of that 830G. I mean, it's really not appropriate at this point for Dan to just be slow walking it.
I'll find out.
Yeah, thank you. We agree.
That's it, unless anybody has any questions?
I just have a comment. Everybody's very proud that the town can see these meetings on TV, except the North End doesn't get cable. Nobody in the North End can see that meeting.
Do you have internet?
YouTube, and it's on the website.
You have the worldwide web?
Yeah, but I don't know how to use it.
All right, Mr. Foley, did you attend the planning meeting?
I did.
Oh, good, let's see.
I'm very proud of myself.
We are too.
Well, they spent most of the meeting discussing the application for Tanaka. That was, that apparently has been withdrawn. So no point in reporting on that. It was fascinating. But again, moot since the application's been withdrawn.
All right, and hopefully, Ms. Jett Harris will still attend the September 9th meeting. I don't have any extra comments tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
We have a second? Meeting adjourned.